City council meeting will now come to order. Uh, Councilwoman Abdo, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening, City Council, City Attorney, Mayor Burcroft, our City Treasurer, and audience, and our Deputy Clerk. This is the City of Romulus City Council Regular Meeting for Monday, November twenty-third, two thousand and twenty. This meeting is being held in accordance with Public Act twenty, sorry, two, two, two twenty-eight, Sections three A two, and Sections two, which allows a meeting of a public body to be conducted electronically in a manner that permits two-way communication so that members of the public body can hear and be heard by other members of the public body, and so that public participants can hear members of the public body and can be heard by members of the public body and other participants during a public comment period. Members of the public wishing to participate in this meeting may do so by phone or online from the Zoom meeting application. To join this meeting by phone, call six four six five five eight eight six five six. When prompted, enter the meeting ID number followed by the pound sign. Tonight's meeting ID number is eight three two two six eight three six six nine eight. During the public comment portion of the meeting, the raise hand method will be used to address City Council. Citizens may also submit written comments by email to publiccomment@romulusgov.com before the end of the public comment portion of the agenda. Mister Chair, roll call was taking, uh, was taken at our, uh, study session at, uh, seven o'clock, and we do have a quorum for, uh, the regular council meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Tonight's council meeting agenda is as follows. Number one agenda, number two minutes, number three petitioner, number four Chairperson's report, five Mayor's report, six Clerk's report, seven Treasurer's report, eight public comment, nine unfinished business, ten new business, eleven warrant, twelve communication, and number thirteen adjournment. And a motion will be in order to accept the regular council meeting agenda as presented.
So moved to accept the agenda as presented.
Support.
In motion, Ms. Tally, supported by Ms. Webb, for approval of agenda as presented. Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Ms. Williams? Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Number two are the minutes for approval, are the minutes from the regular council meeting held on November the ninth, two thousand and twenty.
So moved for approval of minutes from the regular meeting held November ninth, two thousand and twenty.
Uh, I need to, I don't know if I need to eject here. There is a correction I would like to amend from that meeting, if that's okay. Is this the time to do that, or what do I need to do?
Go ahead, Ms. Uh, Tally.
Yeah, so on the communication on the November ninth meeting, um, when I, uh, I spoke about the, uh, miss, uh, not being present at the seven twenty-three eighteen meeting, it said due to my father's death. It wasn't due to his death. That was the last family trip with my trip we took, I took with my family with my dad, not knowing that was the last trip we was gonna have for my dad. My dad passed the following year after that, so I don't know how we noted in the communication. I just wanna set that straight for the record.
Oh, for the record, then, um, Ms. Tally, you would have to make a motion, uh, to amend the minutes to reflect that, uh, once the amendment has been made, and then you would make another motion to approve the amended agenda. So it's gonna require, um, two motions.
Okay, so let me make the motion to amend the November ninth meeting minutes to reflect that I was just absent at the seven twenty-three eighteen meeting.
Support.
Thank you.
It's been motioned by Ms. Tally, supported by Ms. Webb, for amendment of the ninth meeting. Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Now, let me make that motion to, uh, accept the amended meeting agenda, amended minute, amended meeting minutes for November ninth meeting. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right.
Support.
Motion by Ms. Tally, supported by Ms. Webb, for the amendment for the ninth. Ms. Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams? Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tally.
Um, Agenda item two B, for approval, are the minutes from the special meetings, um, held on November ninth, two thousand and twenty. There was a closed session at six thirty PM, um, and six forty-five PM. They were combined, and it was to discuss an attorney opinion and pending litigation. Again, there were two special closed session meetings.
So moved to, uh, for approval of the minutes from the special meetings that were both, that were held, uh, on November ninth.
Support.
In motion by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Tally, and this is for the approval of the minutes from our special meetings. A closed session held on the ninth, November, two thousand and twenty, at six thirty PM and six forty-five PM to discuss attorney opinion and pending litigation. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
There are no petitioners on the agenda, uh, this evening. Uh, number four is the Chairperson's report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At, uh, seven PM, we had a s- a study session to discuss the amendment to Section eight dash twenty of the City Code of Ordinance, ordinance. At this time, uh, Madam Clerk, I wanna recognize, uh, Councilwoman Tally.
Okay, thank you, Mister Barton, and it's in reference to the closed meeting we had on November ninth. I wanna make a motion to concur with legal counsel in the matter of Eminem Express Trucking, um, versus the City of Romulus as presented by legal counsel, November ninth, two thousand and twenty.
Support.
In motion by Ms. Tally, supported by Ms. Abdo, for council approval of consent agreement present and recommended legal counsel in the matter of Eminem Express Trucking Incorporated versus City of Romulus. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved. Again, at this, uh, the Council Chairman going to recognize again, Ms. Tally.
Yes, thank you, Mister Barton. I hear that a resolution is in order for Ms. Clara Williams, that there was a, uh, street, uh, secondary street signing for her today. I'm not sure what that wording sounds like. Maybe somebody can help me with that, but I would like to make a motion that we support a resolution for her, for that, um, honor and for that today.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Tally, supported by Ms. Williams, for resolution for Ms. Williams' street signing. Uh, Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved. My, uh, conclusion on the, uh, Chairperson's report.
Chair, I'll make a motion to accept your report.
Well, just one more, uh, Ms. Ms. Roscoe, I just wanna say one thing, uh, just before you do it, Ms. Roscoe. Uh, I wanna wish everyone a happy and safe Thanksgiving. I want you to be safe. You know, this, this coronavirus is alive and well. Uh, we're gonna get through this. We just have to be patient and do the best we can to keep everybody safe. As you know, I have a large family, and it will be very small this Thanksgiving for the first time in our lives.
Wow.
But it's for the betterment of their health. I will be around next year and have a gathering, a bigger gathering next year than have a big, a bigger gathering this year and don't be around. So I want everyone to be safe, and I love you all. Now, that concludes my Chairperson.
Excuse me, Mister Chair, if I, I'm sorry, if I can, I, uh, Councilwoman Webb is asked to speak before you close out your report.
Okay, Ms. Webb?
Uh, yes, thank you, Ms. Clerk. I would like to congratulate our first African-American female, the Honorable Lisa Martin, who prevailed in the November third, twenty twenty general election.
Woo hoo!
The Honorable Lisa Martin will take office as the next judge in the thirty-fourth District Court on January first, two thousand and twenty-one, and congratulations, Lisa.
Yay!
Yes, Jesus, support.
Oh, Ms. Webb, the Lions, the, the Lions, then, what did the Wi- the Lions do this week?
I don't know, but you know, w- we still on, on, uh, uh, the new judge? So at least we got one win, Mister Barton.
Okay, all right. I, I go for that. I go for that. That concludes the Chairperson's report.
Are, are you sure? Are you sure?
I'm sure, uh, Ms. Roscoe, uh, we still.
Are you ready? Are you ready on the motion?
Support.
Okay, I love y'all guys. It's been motioned by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Tally, for approval of the Chairperson's report. Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved. Thank you.
Number five is the Mayor's report. I know he's on here.
Madam, uh, Clerk, you need to unmute his, uh, line, please.
Okay. Uh, let's see, he looks like he has two, two lines here going on. Let's see. Um, he, he will have to do that himself. Um, he's muted.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yep, you're good now.
I apologize, Counsel. I had problems with the whole study session, so I am on my phone. I'm not on the Zoom, but I will, um, move forward with my report. That's okay. Um, first thing up, I did wanna also say Happy Thanksgiving. I know it's been a crazy two thousand and twenty, but we still have a lot to be thankful for, so I did wanna pass that along as well. And I do have a couple of action items, uh, to present to you this evening. Uh, first up is a recommendation from, uh, Josh Monty, our police captain and legal counsel, and that's a request to concur with administration and grant authorization for the mayor and clerk to enter into the attached grant agreement between the State of Michigan, the Michigan Indigent Defense Commission, and the Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs, and the City of Romulus. That would be from October one of this year till September thirtieth of twenty-one, with our local share to be fifty-five thousand, two sixty-one, and sixty-three cents, and the breakdown of the distribution is above.
To the Chair, if I may?
Hey, Ms. Webb?
I'd like to make that motion to concur with administration and grant the authorization, um, to enter into the grant agreement between the State of Michigan, MIDC, as well as the LARA and the City of Romulus.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Webb, supported by Ms. Tally, and that's for the Indigent Defensive Commission Grant fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Any discussion?
Uh, to the Chair?
Yes, Ms. Ms. Tally.
I just wanna shout out to Captain Josh Monty. Um, me and him was talking, and this, uh, project, this grant has really evolved since the, when it started back a couple of years. It's been three years, and just how it's just, um, has gotten better over these last several years. Captain Monty, I just wanna shout out, you've done a great job, and how, you know, I know it was kinda grass, scratch, grassroots when you first started, but how you're moving this thing along and fine-tuning it, making it better, um, to help the folks that need assistance. So thank you for all your hard work. You've done a great job, and thank you for the discussion we had earlier. Um, you've just done a great job with this. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, uh, Councilwoman Tally.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, that motion is approved.
Thank you, Counsel. Uh, the next action item are some, um, Downtown Development Authority appointments. There's two different, uh, individuals with different terms, and there, and two different motions are required.
I'll make the mo- the first motion, uh, that we concur with the administration and approve the appointment of Beth Mays, uh, to the DDA.
Support.
Been motioned by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Tally, for concur with administration and approve the appointment of Beth May with a term to expire on March eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three, to the Downtown Development Authority. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, that motion is approved.
Thank you, Counsel, and the second appointment is for Jeffrey Lowery.
I'll make that motion that we concur with the administration and approve the appointment of Jeffrey Lowery to the Downtown Development Authority.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Webb, and that's to concur with administration and approve the appointment of Jeff Lowery with a term to expire July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, to Downtown Development Authority. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Uh, Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you, Counsel. Uh, the next item is a recommendation from Kevin Kraus, our Fire Services and Emergency Management Director, and Stephen Hitchcock, our attorney. This one is to concur with administration and adopt the Wayne County Hazard Mitigation Plan, uh, that's dated September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty.
To concur with administration and adopt the Wayne County Hazard Mitigation Plan dated September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty.
Support.
Been motioned by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Webb, to concur with administration and adopt the Wayne County Hazard Mitigation Plan dated September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty. Any discussion? No discussion? Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you, Counsel. Uh, the next item is a recommendation from Roberto Scapatici, our DPW Director and Legal Counsel. This one's to adopt the attached resolution that would authorize the mayor and clerk to use capital improvement bond series twenty seventeen A construction fund for the property acquisition and road improvement costs for the intersection of E Course and Wayne Roads in the City of Romulus, the amount not to exceed the remaining balance, uh, which would be approximately one million, six thirty-nine, six thirty-one, and fifty-nine cents.
To the Chair?
Yes, Ms. Tally?
I'd like to make that motion to adopt the attached resolution to authorize the mayor and clerk to use the capital improvement bond series twenty seventeen A construction fund for property acquisition and road improvements costs for the intersection of E Course and Wayne Roads in the City of Romulus, and the amount not to exceed the remaining balance in this account, which is approximately one million, six hundred, thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirty-one dollars and fifty-nine cents.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Tally, supported by Ms. Williams, for capital improvement bond payments for property acquisition and road improvements costs, water and E Course intersection. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you, Counsel. Uh, the next is also a recommendation from Roberto Scapatici, DPW, uh, Director, and Steve Hitchcock. Uh, this one is to concur with administration and adopt the attached resolution that would be to use public funds to replace residential lead private water service lines within the City of Romulus.
To the Chair?
Yes, Ms. Tally?
I'd like to concur with the administration and adopt the attached resolution to use public funds to replace residential lead private water service lines in the City of Romulus.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Tally, supported by Ms. Roscoe. This is to concur with, uh, administration and adopt the attached resolution to use public funds to replace residential lead private water services lines in the City of Romulus. Any discussion? No discussion?
Yes.
Oh, Ms. Ms. Williams?
Yes, I noticed it says, oh, five, five percent, uh, starting January the first, two thousand and twenty-one. Do we have any idea of where, where this would start, what area of the city this would start?
Uh, Roberto, are you there? Yeah, I'm, I'm here, Mayor. Uh, Councilwoman Williams, uh, we, we've got a list of homes, about thirty homes, uh, that we, we know of in the city, uh, that had lead service lines, uh, either on the public side or the private side, and we're gonna solicit, you know, a handful of those folks, uh, two to three, to see if, uh, they're interested in, in joining this program to have their lead service line removed.
Is, is this something that will happen every year, or this is just a one time?
No, it's, it's gonna happen. It's gonna be a, a slow progression. So the state is giving us five years to find all of our lead service lines, because i- it, it's only as good as the data we have over the past forty years of where lead service lines were placed. So we've gotta find them. We've gotta replace them five percent a year, uh, during, at twenty twenty-five, we need to know where they're all at, and the bigger picture is, within twenty years, we gotta remove them all. So it's, it's an incremental step, year by year, getting towards removing lead out of the system.
Thank you, Roberto.
Thank you. If there's no other comments?
Up to the Chair?
Yes, uh, Ms. Tally?
Yeah, and I, I just again, I just wanna thank Roberto, uh, for his time today. I mean, you just know your stuff. That's all I can say. You know your stuff. I love talking to you 'cause you know what you're talking about, and you make it easy for me, you know, explain it to me, and so I can understand what's going on. So thank you, Roberto, and just to all the directors, every time I call you guys and get, I need explanation, I get what I'm looking for. So I just wanna say thank you to Mayor, to your team. Y'all know what you, 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 you get down to the heart of the matter. You know what you're talking about, and you make it easy for me to understand it. So thank you, Roberto.
Thank you.
Thanks for passing on those comments. We'll make sure everybody on the team knows that.
Thank you.
Is there any other comments? Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you, Counsel. Um, and the last item for action I have, this is the budget amendment portion of this project, but this is, as it pertains to the, the Barth Road Water Main Project, uh, the request that you have before you is to concur with administration, and this would be introduction of budget amendment twenty slash twenty-one dash ten, and that would be for the Barth Road Water Main Project.
To the Chair?
Yes, Ms. Tally?
I would like to make the motion to concur with administration and introduce budget amendment twenty slash twenty-one dash ten for the Barth Road Water Main Project.
Support.
I heard two voices. Was that you, Ms. Roscoe?
No, it's Ms. Abdo.
Ms. Abdo? Okay. It's been motioned by Ms. Tally, supported by Ms. Abdo for introduction of budget amendment twenty twenty-one dash ten, Water and Sewer Fund, for the Barth Road Water Main Project. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote. Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, that motion is approved.
Thank you, Counsel. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor.
Number six is the Clerk's report, and good evening to everyone again. Um, the, under the, uh, Chairperson's report, the Mayor Protemet mentioned, um, that there was an Executive Advisory Board meeting, um, um, at six forty-five this evening, and it was to, uh, for reappointments, um, to the, uh, Board of Review, and pursuant to the Charter, uh, Section eleven, uh, point seven, is that the members have to be appointed at a November, uh, council meeting, and this is the last council meeting. And so it is the recommendation from the Board of Review, um, that met this evening to reappoint Deborah Hoffman, um, and Shirley Lambersen uh, to the Board of Review, uh, terms to commence January first, two thousand and twenty-one through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. Section eleven point seven of the City Charter requires that each member shall be appointed by the council for a term of three years commencing, um, on the following January first. However, according to MCL two eleven point twenty-eight, members appointed to the Board of Review shall serve for terms of two years, according to legal counsel. Um, according to legal counsel, it states the statute is the controlling factor, so the term shall run for two years. So I'm asking counsel based off the recommendation of the Executive Advisory, uh, Committee, um, to approve the reappointments of Shirley Lambersen and Deborah Hoffman, um, for their terms to commence January first, two thousand and twenty-one, and expire December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two.
Support.
Oh, do we have to make a motion?
Yes, I need a motion, please.
I thought that, uh, did we make a motion to appoint them two already?
No, it, it was, you all had, uh, made the recommendation at your Executive Advisory Board, so now you're recommending to council for that improvement, so it has to, uh, go before the whole body, um, to approve those reappointments. So it's not in your packet. Um, it's not, it was only from the, um,
Oh, okay.
in the packet for the executive. In the packet for the executive advisory committee, um, and so I was just reminded that this does have to be approved by council, uh, you know, during a November council meeting.
So I have the motions here, can I, can I go, I'll go ahead and make the motion, 'cause I had to hear from earlier. So a motion to reappoint Deborah Hoffman to the board of review from January first twenty twenty-one through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, and a motion to reappoint Shirley Lamberson to the board of review from January first is the same twenty twenty-one through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
Support.
It's been motioned by, uh, Ms. Tally, supported by Ms. Williams, for the reappointments, any discussion? Hear no discussion? Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, that motion is approved.
Thank you, counsel, and then lastly, um, I'm asking for a memorial resolution, uh, for the, uh, family of Norman McClendon. Um, he passed away about a month ago. Um, Mr. McClendon is the father of, um, I forgot Christie's last name, but she works for DPW and also the brother-in-law to, um, Deborah Hoffman. His wife Rita worked for this, uh, the city for a number of years for, uh, former mayor, uh, Bill Oakley, and, uh, Norman McClendon served on our planning commission board, and he worked for Romulus Schools for a number of years where he retired. Um, so a family that was stapled here in Romulus, and then they retired and went to sunny Florida. Um, but, uh, Norm passed away, um, about a month ago, and, uh, so I just think it would be appropriate, um, if council would, um, adopt a memorial resolution, uh, for his family.
I'll make that motion.
Support.
Been motioned by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Tally?
That was Ms. Webb.
Ms. Webb, I'm sorry. For memorial resolution for, for Mr. McClendon? Any discussion? Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, that motion is approved.
Thank you, counsel, and that concludes the clerk's report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
All right. Number seven is a treasurer's report. In your packet, you have, um, the quarterly investment report ending, um, in September twenty twenty, uh, for your review, and, um, the, if you have any questions, our city treasurer is, um, part of this meeting this evening, that, uh, she's available for you, if you do have questions. If not, uh, for your review is the, um, quarterly investment report.
Through the chair?
Yes, Ms. Tally.
I do have one thing against that treasure regarding this thing. Um, well, you have a nice narrative and lead into the report, now we just get report. Where's the lead in? Where the narrative? Tell me what's going on with the market and all this, and I just get report, Stacy.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, so usually if there's a narrative before the report, it's usually presented by Brian or Greg, but as, as you can see, um, the market is, it's, it's struggling, right? So I can tell you this, our rates are nowhere near what they were, because safety comes first, and that's what's most important for our best investments, and then, of course, liquidity. So an interest rate comes last. So we are following, um, our policy and making sure that the funds are safe. We are earning some money, but nowhere near what we were earning before. So we watch every day, the market goes up, the market goes down, um, but it's pretty low right now for the investments that, that we're in. So, um, hopefully we'll, we'll have better times as we move forward. But, um, page six, um, has a snapshot of all the requirements, um, in the investment policy, so that's showing you the, uh, distribution as well as the sector allocation, the credit quality. And then on the fo- following page is the, um, interest, and as you can see, the interest is, is, um, not nearly as much as, as we were getting at one time, but, um, the rates have fallen quite a bit. But there's a lot of information here, there's forty-one pages, because of course we, we give you all the details, um, of all the investments, but, um, but yep, hopefully the rates will eventually work their way back up, but this is what we get in the meantime, but the investments are safe.
No, and, and I know they are, and I was just teasing you, but you could do a little paragraph in the beginning of the report. I was looking for my, one of my past reports, I couldn't find it, but they do a little nice write-up before they actually get into the report, and, um, you know, and I get it, no big deal, but I, I was, I do kinda look for it, it kinda gives me a, a, a snapshot before I get into the report.
Well, I will tell you this, um, going forward, since you look forward to it, I will make sure it's there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Please a thank you.
Is there any other questions?
No other questions? No questions.
Thank you. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Treasurer.
Thank you.
Number, number eight is public comment, and this is the portion of the meeting for those members of the public wishing to address city council. The raised hand method will be used to identify those wishing to speak. If you have joined this meeting online, again, the raised hand icon from the, uh, use the bra- raised hand icon from the meeting app. Uh, make sure you tap the microphone icon to unmute yourself when called upon. If you dialed in, uh, from your touchstone phone, press the star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute yourself. After you've been acknowledged, again, we ask you to state your name. You will have three minutes to speak, and any additional time will be upon approval of the chairperson. And at this time, I do not see any raised hands, but Mr. Chair and Counsel, we did receive an email under, um, in the public comment portion, uh, for to, to be read this evening, and the comment is, it's coming from Toby Walker. It says, "Good evening, I'm a homeowner residing at three-three-three-one-six Sand Piper Drive. Please advise where we are on the list of street repairs, the fairways at Gateway Subdivision, specifically Sand Piper Drive and Swan Lake. Thank you very much and stay safe, Toby Walker." Um, I don't know who can answer that for her, uh, perhaps, um, if there's no one to answer that this evening, I can provide, um, her email address, um, to perhaps the mayor's office, and then, um, Ms. Walker, um, at least can direct, or the mayor's office can direct us, um, uh, who, I guess where we can direct Ms. Ms. Walker to get her questions answered. And with that, that is the only, um, public comment request, and I don't see any hands raised, nor do we have any other emails.
Okay, Madam Clerk, then we're gonna close that part out.
Thank you. Number nine is unfinished business. Number ten is new business. Number eleven for approval is warrant twenty dash twenty-two. We need a motion.
Ms. Abdo?
Yeah, I just had to unmute myself. All right, I'll make that motion, uh, that we pay warrant twenty dash twenty-two in the following amounts. General fund, one hundred fifty-two thousand, six hundred thirty-nine dollars and seventy-four cents. Total, let's see, major street fund, eleven thousand, four hundred ninety-three dollars and sixty-seven cents. Local street fund, one thousand, three hundred twenty-four dollars and fifty-five cents. Public safety fund, twenty-four thousand, four hundred eighty-eight dollars and forty-two cents. Cable TV, fifty-four dollars and forty-six cents. Uh, Mayor Monroe's special assessment, three hundred thirty-six dollars and twelve cents. Street lighting fund, forty-eight thousand, fifty-two dollars and eighty-nine cents. Oakwood SAD, three hundred and ten dollars and ninety-three cents. Garbage and rubbish collection fund, one thousand, four hundred ninety-five dollars and thirty-five cents. Nine eleven service fund, nine thousand, five hundred forty-eight dollars and two cents. Law enforcement, sixteen thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars. Uh, uh, Mark Forfeiture State, one thousand, four hundred fifty-nine dollars and thirty-nine cents. Library fund, five thousand, one hundred eighty-two dollars and thirty cents. DDA, nine hundred and fourteen dollars and nine cents. Tifa District Two, four thousand, two hundred seventy-one dollars and forty-one cents. Beverly Road Special Assessment, one thousand dollars. Water and Sewer Fund, one hundred ninety-six thousand, six hundred forty-two dollars and fifty-one cents. Motor Vehicle Fund, twenty-eight thousand, three hundred nineteen dollars and sixty-four cents. Technology Services, nine thousand, four hundred ninety-three dollars and twenty cents. Retiree Insurance Benefits, two hundred and sixteen thousand, eight hundred seventy-four dollars and ninety-six cents. Revolving Fund, eight thousand, six hundred and eight dollars. General Tax Fund, six thousand, fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Current Tax, one thousand, eight hundred seventy-eight dollars and seventy-nine cents. Delinquent Personal Property Fund, six thousand, seven hundred thirty-eight dollars and fifty-six cents. Okay, Payroll Fund, two hundred fifty-four thousand, seven hundred eighty-six dollars and ninety cents. All funds totaling one million, eight thousand, two hundred eighty-seven dollars and forty cents.
Support.
Thank you.
It's been motioned by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Tally, to pay warrant number twenty dash twenty-two for one million, eight thousand, two hundred eighty-seven dollars and forty cents. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Discussion?
Ms. Williams? I couldn't hear.
She says discussion.
Go ahead, Ms. Williams, discuss. We can't, we can't hear you, Ms. Williams.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I noticed on page one oh seven, under, uh, the DTE, it appears that the senior citizen building, the bill went down a little bit, probably close to four hundred dollars. But I noticed, and I, I'm, I'm curious, is one-one, one-two-one, is that the court? Can anybody ac- answer that? Is that the court building? Uh, the city attorney, uh, Ellen, uh, he, he's on there, we get paid, let's use him. Uh, he should know whether that's the court building.
I'm not sure it, it is, but it sounds like it would be.
Okay, I'm, I'm looking at this, between the city hall and the court building, the utilities is running a little bit over ten thousand a month. I, I, I think what the court needs to do is, since they're not operating that building, is cut some of them lights off. I, the, the utilities shouldn't be running at high in the building, it's not in full operation.
That's true.
So that's just a, a, a suggestion, because with what's happening with this virus, and I'm sure tickets are not being written as they normally would. I, I definitely don't wanna get stuck, uh, or we as the resident get stuck paying the bill, because uh, those folks over at the court is not being mindful of, uh, what these utility bills are running. Uh, ten thousand, over ten thousand dollars is a lot of money for one month. That's a lot of money. So if, if someone can inform them, uh, they can call me, I'll tell them, I'm not afraid, uh, but they need to cut back on those lights, especially since the building is not in full operation. It's, it's lit up like a Christmas tree, constantly. So, um, we definitely need to cut back on that, and that, that was, um, my, my concern, uh, with this warrant.
Okay, it's, it's either the library or the court, we'll check on that.
Through the chair?
Well, who had it?
Ms. Tally?
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Williams.
Yes.
Yeah.
Whichever building it is, pan, using utilities in that amount for one month, is not making sense. Especially with either one, whether it's the, the library or whether it's the court, we're not in full operation, so they need to cut back. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Tally, you had a comment?
I said Maria Ferris earlier, whoever did this printout of this warrant, thank you for my agent eyes. Can, can we do this ongoing? This looks great, I can read it so good. So I just have to say that for the record, for my agent eyes, thank you.
Okay.
I'll let Don Taylor know.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments?
I, I, I have a, a question, and then I'll, I'll agree with my colleague.
Hi, Ms. Ms. Webb.
Councilwoman Tally, I, I was gonna say that myself, thank you so much, whoever did this, I can see. I see that Director Kraus has left, uh, the meeting, apparently. I just had a question in regards to the, um, Pfeiffer Investigations, uh, LLC. Have we hired, uh, two new fire personnel? I, you know, I know about our police, but, uh, background check, that was for the fire, fire department?
Good evening, Chair. Um, since he did leave, um, I can check into that for you and get back with you.
Oh, no one knows that if we've hired a fireman or not?
No, I can verify who the actual, um, background check was for.
Oh, no, no, I know who it's for. I see the names, but I, I, uh, I didn't know that we had hired firemen. We're talking about Crawford and, um, Clary, I, I would imagine, but no, you know, we, we just, you know, just wasn't informed. We don't, we don't get informed hardly of anything until after the fact.
So I will talk to Dr., um, Chief Kraus, and I can have him report back to me, or, and/or the mayor, and we can get back with you on that.
So what are you going to report back to? What are you going to?
Um, just to verify what that background check is for, and what, um, just to make sure it's for FD.
Well, Maria, it says right here, background, fire department, Crawford, Roos, or either Roosie, background investigations, Clary and Barco. I just wanted to know, are these new fire personnel? That was the only question.
Okay, then that, that, that would be for Chief Kraus to respond on.
Thank you.
Through the chair, if I could answer that, this is Chief of Staff Julie White-Toco. It is normal process to have a background check done prior to there being a hiring done, so there may be some background work being done at this point, but nothing's been confirmed as far as hiring at this point. We're still at the, the investigation part and doing backgrounds.
Oh, okay.
Great, thank you. Okay, if there's no more, uh, comments, I'll continue. Ms. Williams?
Yeah.
Uh, Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, warrant number twenty, twenty-two will be paid. Thank you.
Number twelve is communication.
Mr. Chair, I have something tonight.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Roscoe.
First of all, I wanna wish everyone a very good Thanksgiving, and, um, encourage them all to stay safe and, uh, be smart about where you're at and what you're doing, and, uh, enjoy your little bits of family that you can, uh, have dinner with. But I want to, uh, finish up with a follow-up from our fall-themed contest that we've been having, and so it goes like this. The Cutest Baby Contest, first place was Sydney Shoncheck, second place was Marlene Ray, third place was Rosebel Valdez, and I apologize if I didn't get that first name pronounced correct. And, uh, we had the Cutest Pets, of course. First place went to Bandit Lyndermuth, second place went to Lucy Mays, third place went to Dex Aldridge, and then we had our favorite fall-themed decorating porch and house. First place went to Linda A- Adams, second place was Adam and Tanya Brown, and third place went to Leslie Andrews. And I, uh, just wanna thank everyone for participating. Um, everyone received a certificate and a prize, and you can probably get more pictures and information on the And you can probably get more pictures and information on the downtown Romulus Facebook page. And I just want to uh thank everyone for their time in participating in our community events.
Thank you, Ms. Roscoe.
Through the chair?
Yes, Ms. Tally?
Yeah, just a couple of things, please indulge me for a second, I just want to, a couple of, over a month or so ago, I may talked about the Romulus Police. Uh Romulus Fire Department, who um have been teaming up with the um uh with the MDHSS. The MDHHS regarding the Mass Up Michigan Campaign, they distributed uh mass to to the uh. Uh I'm sorry, to the uh Romulus Senior Center, the Romulus City Hall, the Romulus Public Library. Romulus Towers and the Whispering Willows, and then they um offer these things uh for our churches here in Romulus, and so over the weekend. Um we have placed the order through with all the churches of like four thousand mass, and I want to thank uh Brian uh O'Connor. Who has led the initiative under the direction of uh Director Kevin Kraus. Um this past weekend, seventeen hundred mass were uh distributed to four of the local churches. Um I want to name those churches, the first church is Living by Faith Ministry, under the. Pastorship of Pastor Charles Tolliver, right at Wayne E- Wayne Course at seven oh six six Wayne Course. Uh Living Rock Church, past uh um pastor by Frank Howard. At three, three, two hundred E Course Road, received mass this weekend. First Baptist Church, My Mama's Church, under the direction of Pastor Charles Three, they received mass um this weekend at eleven, four, one, two, Delano. Um and we also got mass, mass were given to the Community United Methodist Church right on Olive Street. Um under the pastorship of Carolyn Jones, so I want to thank the chief. And Brian for their efforts and us partnering, I'm looking forward for the rest of the mass, I know we have to wait from. Um the rest of the mass to come from the MDHHS, but just helping um them keep their congregation safe and. Other community efforts they're doing with the mass. Um I just want to thank you got the fire department for all the work they did, they went out and they took the mass, and the firemen that went out to the. To um distribute the mass, they took pictures with the pastors or the people there that were receiving the mass, it was just a great initiative, um. I know Director Kraus got a chance to talk with uh with the uh News Herald, they wanted to talk about it, they um. Interview of Director Kraus, I got to talk to him for a few minutes. And um and we might want to look for on their website, thenewsherald.com, they're gonna do an article. Regarding this mass initiative and and what the fire department has been doing overall with. Teaming up with uh different um entities in our uh in our community to distribute mass, so great job to. Uh Brian O'Connor, great job to Director Kevin Kraus for being a resource for health and safety for our community. We needed, done a great job during this COVID, um and just just want to thank them for all their efforts with that. Uh the next thing I want to uh talk about, um I want to thank the city for the invite, for the um swearing in of our newest officer, Mark Salazar. Of the Romulus Police Department, I was able to pop in on the Zoom meeting this morning, I was a little late, and if I had got there a little later, I would have missed the whole thing, it was quick. But um I want to say congratulations to Mark Salazar, our our clerk did a great job, thank for swearing in, thank you, it was really good to see that. Um and uh Chief Finnis was there um on hand as well, I think Captain Monte was there, but just thank you for that invite. And keeping us informed of that, um I want to say thank you. And then I want to end on a note of cheer, I did a drive-by in our community um over the weekend, and I went by one of our. Colleagues, co- um Councilwoman Abdo House. Great, fantastic lights she has at her home, I want to just think, just say thank you for that, you're gonna give Heinz Park a run for their money. Um over the years, cause them lights look fabulous, so I did a drive-by, thank you for allowing me to pass by your home and look at them beautiful lights. And um Heinz Park better watch out, so that's all I have, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Is there any more more communication?
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes, I would like to inform the residents, the listening residents, and those that will uh maybe uh tune in later on. The uh it's actually the son of uh. The owners of the uh Metro Meet, right there at uh Van Born and uh Wayne Road. It's uh they're having an event, and it's called Bringing Back Hope. Uh the Village of Infinity Hope, Jeremy Lanford and the Real McCoy. They have uh they're asking for donations, and you can drop them off there at the uh. The re- uh three, five, six, five, one, Van Born Road. Uh this event takes place on December. Twenty twenty, it starts at one PM to seven PM, they have coats, they have gloves, they have uh. PPE uh items to uh give to the residents. They have food, drinks, snacks, and raffles, and they're asking uh uh informing everyone that they're welcome. Um they will be practicing social distancing, so uh please uh support them. And also uh tomorrow, Forgotten Harvest at the high school, we will be uh. Given uh uh turkeys to each family, there's one turkey per car. So if you normally ride with another individual, you need, maybe need to drive by yourself, or either you would have to get back in line. Because we only allowed to give one uh turkey per car. Uh and that's along with the rest of the items that we normally give every week. Uh we start at twelve noon and until it's gone, we say three o'clock, but normally we're finished before three o'clock. So all this listening, please share the uh message, we would love to make sure that we feed as many Romulus uh residents as possible. Thank you.
Councilwoman Williams for that, donations on the fifth, is what kind of donations are they taking? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. Okay, thank you.
Or monetary, I'm sorry.
Monetary, yeah, we can do some cash, okay. Thank you.
Okay, I have one thing just to say to my colleague, um. Kathy, your neighbors, I'm gonna have a problem with the traffic on your street.
Not me, it's my husband.
Hell, is there any more communication?
Excuse me, I would like to say this. With with everything that has happened with the uh November election, I I just want to again. Uh talking to so many different clerks, you know, whether it was on the city side or or the county side. Thank you so much, the Honorable Ellen Craig Braggs, for your work that you've done, because I haven't heard. Any complaints of your service in the primary or the general. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank everyone for their prayers. Uh for allowing Michigan to be counted.
Yes.
Been so much unnecessary foolishness, but thank God we can move forward to uh twenty twenty-one, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams, for those kind words, and uh we are glad that uh. The elections were certified today, and so now we can move forward, we can move forward.
Yes.
And with that, ladies and gentlemen, if this, if there is no more communication. Wishing everyone a happy and safe Thanksgiving, and uh which takes us to thirteen adjournment.
So much. Support.
That was by Ms. Webb. And was that Ms. Tally?
Yeah.
Oh, I got it right. Okay, Ms. Tally, okay. Motion by Ms. Webb, supported by Ms. Tally for adjournment, Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, we are adjourned, thank you and be safe.
Thank you.